We could either do one thing, he could give you the tie or you could give him the shirt.[3.65][3.65][laughter]
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the April 4th, 2022 City Council, Crest Hill City Council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. If everyone would please rise for the pledge of allegiance and please remain standing after the pledge.[32.47][32.47][inaudible]
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Unfortunately, over the past couple of weeks, the city of Crest Hill has lost two very well-known and prominent individuals from the city of Crest Hill. First, Mr. Donald Hoffman, 93 years old, passed away on March 16th, 2022. Don Hoffman was instrumental in the incorporation of the city of Crest Hill back in 1960. He was also one of the original eight aldermen that were elected to the city, or chosen to be on the city council in 1960, January 22nd of 1960. And then he ran for the position in 1961, was elected to a four-year term, and served another four years for the city of Crest Hill. He lived, which is now in Ward Four. He was, again, a well-known and prominent individual for the city of Crest Hill. He did a lot of wonderful things for the city of Crest Hill. We certainly, as a city, we wish to add our condolences, extend our gratitude for his years of service to the city of Crest Hill, to his family, and thank him for making the city of Crest Hill a better place to live. We also lost another well-known and prominent individual from the city of Crest Hill, Mr. Jim Troha, just passed away a few days ago on March 30th, 2022. I believe he was 82 years old. Jim was an accountant by trade and actually served on our police pension board for 30 years. So he gave a lot of time to the city of Crest Hill, also, as did Mr. Hoffman. We certainly wish to extend our condolences to his wife Carol and their children on the loss of their husband and their father. We certainly want to extend our gratitude for the commitment, the dedication, and the loyalty that he gave to the city of Crest Hill for 30 years on the police pension board. He again improved the quality of life for the residents and for the police officers of the city of Crest Hill. So I would ask for a moment of silence in memory of Mr. Donald Hoffman and Mr. James Troha. Thank you. Roll call, please, Chris.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Richey.
Here.
Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Mark Zepidi.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
Joe Kuba.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we do not have a business promotion this evening, so we'll continue with the agenda items. First is the approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held on March 21st, 2022. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the approval of the city council minutes of March 21st, 2022. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Richey.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Zepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Abstain.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
And Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have any agenda items here.
Any questions of our city attorney?
[inaudible]
Okay, thanks, Mike. Our city administrator, Jim Marino.
Good evening, Jim. Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have in front of you a change order from Katie Landscaping out of Rockdale. This is a change order to the Memorial Garden. This was discussed at the last work session. What it does is it adds to the design of the Memorial Garden a centerpiece of three columns. You have renderings in the packet, and this was reviewed by the owner of Katie Landscaping last week. So the change order is in the amount of forty thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. So that includes the basalt columns and the brickwork around it. It will add to what's already been designed for the Memorial Garden. A question came up at the work session as to whether or not the columns will be lit, and they will be lit, but a question was also asked if the lighting would be colored lighting. And Katie Landscape is not putting in the lighting that's being done by the electrical contractor. So last week, I asked Kirk Wilkins to find out if it's going to be colored lighting, and he's checking with the contractor and hasn't heard back yet, but I'll let you know once I find out. And if the current specs don't call for colored lighting, I will ask them to change that if they can and include colored lighting for the columns. Answer any questions you may have.
Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Dyke, for the approval of the change order number two for the Memorial Garden. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Zepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Richey.
Yes.
Motion carries, resolution 1151.
Okay, anything else, Jim?
Nothing else.
Any questions of our city administrator?
Yeah, one question. We look for assistant manager, are they charging us anything for that?
For assistant manager?
Yeah.
We're not advertising for assistant manager right now.
Because I've seen somebody send a minute, you talked to somebody, and they told you go down the side and get your own.
We are advertising for a community and economic development director. Is that what you're referring to?
No, according to the assistant manager, so.
No, we're not advertising for that.
Okay, well, anyway, the person's going to start in two weeks.
Who?
I don't know, whoever you got.
No.
I think he's talking about that one email that you sent those.
It's on my telephone at home. There's something, it's supposed to start, I thought it was assistant manager, that it started in two weeks.
That, well, what I had mentioned in that report was considering bringing on an interim temporary person.
Right, temporarily, yeah.
But no, I'm not going to do that. It's being put on hold, right?
Oh, okay, because I just wondered, because I think the council would have voted on that for that, and I just wondered about that.
Right, no, nothing's moving forward on that.
Oh, okay, all right, then.
Anybody else?
This won't work, anyway, that works.
All right, just one follow-up on the Memorial Garden, just if there's any confusion out there. All of the stones that are currently there, which we have almost 1,175 names on, all of the stones that are out there, that will all be transported and transferred from its present location here at 1610 Plainfield Road to the new location on City Center Boulevard at New City Hall when the time is appropriate, which we're hoping it's probably going to probably be in June. We are unsure at this time, but everything's kind of pointing to the strong possibility that we're going to need to have one more Memorial Day ceremony here at our present location. It just makes a lot of sense to have it here with still some of the construction and the equipment that's going on at the new city center. So we'll have, I'll have an announcement here at the next council meeting. We do have guest speakers that are lined up for this Memorial Day. We actually have two World War II veterans that live in the city of Crest Hill who are going to be our guest speakers. So I'll have more information on all of that in two weeks. But for right now, it's a strong possibility that we will be having the ceremony here at 1610 Plainfield Road for one more year. Okay? Moving on to Public Works Department. Our Director of Public Works, Mr. Mark Seifer. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The only thing I have before me this evening is an ordinance authorizing issuance of waterworks and sewerage revenue bonds for the city of Crest Hill in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed forty-nine million five thousand. As we spoke about last week, forty-nine million five thousand is intended to cover-
Five hundred, Mark.
Five hundred, sorry, forty-nine million five hundred thousand is intended to cover engineering, legal, and anticipated construction costs as the improvement. The latest opinion on profit cost is thirty-nine million nine hundred and eight-four, which has gone up since October, 2.5 percent. This will only be used for the scope of this project. Any change orders will come back before council. The city's in a good position to receive up to five million dollars in principal forgiveness with a loan interest rate as low as 0.65 percent. Bids should go out mid-May and come back mid-July, and we'll take advantage of best funding available currently available for the city.
So moved is presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for an ordinance authorizing the issuance of waterworks and sewerage revenue bonds of the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed forty-nine million five hundred thousand dollars. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Zepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Abstain.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Richey.
Yes.
And Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries, ordinance 1900.
With that, I was happy answering questions, but I do want to make everyone know, let everyone know, we have been out, we are dodging raindrops, trying to fill potholes as best as possible. We're getting bad out there. We were on Division Street on Friday, Gaylord on Friday, Katon Farm was today. Finished Katon Farm, finished Katon Farm tomorrow, getting some of the interiors. I know we're getting a lot of calls into Public Works. We're trying to get around as fast as possible, but unfortunately, with the weather we're currently getting, you don't patch in the rain. So, but we're getting out there, we're trying to do as much as possible done, and we see it every day, too. So, we're out there. We don't want to answer any questions.
Questions of Public Works.
Yeah, how about that stop sign on Katon Farm Road by the business?
That was determined, Ron Weedman looked into that, that was determined that was a private drive, so that'd be their responsibility to put that up.
I thought Ron said that was our street.
Now, I'll jump in the other one. He told me it was that that was a private drive because it's just an easement to go back there, so.
Okay, maybe get it to repeat them, open up themselves.
Yep, that'd be up to them if they do want to put something there that they're not regulated to, but if they, we could ask them to.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, just remembered, the telephone, the COMED poles.
McGilvary, or?
All of them on Weber.
The cut-down?
Yes, remember they disconnected everything last year finally? They haven't taken them down. Any update on that?
I can keep pushing them. I know they're going around replacing telephone poles right now, so they have crews in the area, so I could make another call. We've been, obviously you know, we've been fighting that two years now.
Yeah, I know.
And everybody's, every utility's pointing the finger at another, to another utility right now. COMED's pointed to AT&T, it's pointed to Verizon, it's pointed back to COMED, so I will-
But that one on McGilvery, it's very dangerous because it's blocking the view of-
All of them are doubled up, and near any of the intersections are good.
That one is horrible. I get complaints about it all the time.
We will put out another phone call and an email to our contacts.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mark. City engineer, we have nothing on the agenda. Community development, you have reports in your packet, but there are no agenda items. We will move on to the Police Department, our Police Chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have anything on the agenda this evening. You just get your two-week informational packet, and I'd be willing to entertain any questions.
Any questions of our Police Chief?
No.
Okay, thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Mayor's report. Agenda item, proclamation celebrating National Dare Day in the city of Crest Hill. We'll begin with the reading of the proclamation, and we'll begin with Alderman Dyke.
Thank you, Mayor. A proclamation recognizing DARE's birthday, whereas DARE, drug abuse resistance education, teaches young people opioid and vaping preventative, teen health, suicide prevention, and internet and social media safety, and-
Whereas DARE targets young people when they are most venerable to tremendous peer pressures and teaches the skills to make safe and responsible decisions, and whereas DARE is taught in many more than 300,000 classrooms in all 50 states and 54 countries around the world, and-
Whereas over 36 million kindergarten through 12th grade students are positively impacted by DARE each year, and whereas the DARE program is taught by specially trained police officers who have directed, who have direct experience with criminals whose lives have been ruined by substance abuse, and-
Whereas each police officer who teaches the DARE program completes an intensive 80-hours training course that includes instruction in teaching techniques, officer school relationship development and self-esteem, child development and communication skills, and- Whereas the DARE curricula helps students recognize and successfully manage stress, evaluate risk-taking behaviors, resist gang pressure, apply effective decision-making skills, and evaluate the consequences of the choices available to them, and-
Whereas the DARE program has achieved outstanding success teaching positive and effective approaches to some of the most difficult problems facing our young people today, substance abuse, violence, gangs, and bullying, and whereas this day serves as a celebration for all past and present students that have graduated from the Drug Abuse Resistance Education Program.
Now therefore, Raymond R. Solomon, by virtue of the authority vested in him as the mayor of the city of Crest Hill, do hereby proclaim April 21st, 2022, be observed as Dare Day in the city of Crest Hill, and encourage his residents to observe that day with appropriate activities, including wearing a DARE shirt to show your support to the program.
Given under his hand and the corporate seal of the city of Crest Hill this fourth day of April 2022, Raymond R. Solomon, Mayor, City of Crest Hill.
So moved is presented.
Second. We have a motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Albert, for the approval of the proclamation. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mark Zepidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Richey?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
And Claudia Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have the honor and privilege of having our current DARE offer, Officer Heidi Outlaw, with us. I will say that for the last 30 years, DARE has been an important product of the city of Crest Hill, and we've taken an active role in helping hundreds, probably thousands, of students over the last 30 years. I just want to read off some of the names that have served as DARE officers for the city of Crest Hill. First, our first DARE officer, I believe, was from someone from Will County Sheriff's Department, if I remember correctly. And then it was followed by our own Tom Evanoff, who rose to the rank of sergeant and is now retired. Our second DARE officer was Officer Brad Hertzman, who rose to the rank of Deputy Chief of Administration and is now retired. Our third officer that was our DARE officer was Officer Ryan Dobchik, who is currently still with us, and he has now been, most recently, promoted to the rank of Deputy Chief of Administration. Joe Lacasto was our fourth DARE officer over the last 30 years, who has now risen to the ranks of Sergeant in Investigations. And our final officer, that I believe is since 2014-
Correct.
-is Officer Heidi Outlaw, and is now our community service officer also, correct. I will tell you that all of these officers, I have been at ceremonies, graduations that they have handled, so I speak highly of all of them. I could tell you since, for the last seven years now, Officer Heidi Outlaw has done a tremendous job also. The way she interacts with the students, she teaches the 4th grade students at Richland Grade School, and she teaches the 5th grade students at Chaney-Monji School. About 150 students each year coming out of both schools. You know, it's a difficult task in the environment and the social climate that we live in today, but I will tell you that Heidi has touched many, many hearts of these young children. I believe she'll be the first to tell you that she has not touched everybody, but I will tell you that, the hearts, the hearts.
Oh, my gosh.
But I will tell you, it's a very difficult job. It's a very difficult job in today's climate. But she does a fantastic job, and she's earned their respect, and she's gained many friends. And, you know, if she can change several lives and keep people off of drugs and alcohol, then the program is worth it. And it's worth that the city of Crest Hill sponsors this, and also the Crest Hill Lions Club has been sponsoring the DARE graduations probably for 25 of those last 30 years. So it is my honor and privilege, on behalf of everybody, all the students that went through the DARE program at the city of Crest Hill, all the past officers, and all the future students and future officers that'll continue to do the DARE program in the city of Crest Hill. We certainly want to extend our gratitude for their commitment, their dedication, and loyalty to this program. And it is my honor and privilege, on behalf of the entire city of Crest Hill, to present a copy of this proclamation to Officer Outlaw. Thank you.[1272.41][1272.41][applause]
Mayor and Council, I want to say thank you very much, on behalf of myself, as the DARE officer for the city of Crest Hill. Obviously, I've followed a very distinguished line of officers here that have taught DARE, so I hope to follow in their footsteps. It's been an honor to teach these kids. It's been a lot of fun. It's been difficult. It's been stressful, and it's been amazing. It's been, I've met amazing kids, amazing parents, and I work with some of the best teachers on the planet at both Chaney and Richland. I couldn't do this without them. I couldn't do this without you guys, and I certainly couldn't do it without this amazing guy standing behind me. Without the support of our deputy chiefs and our chief, I wouldn't be able to do this. So, again, thank you very much. I really appreciate this. On behalf of all of the DARE officers we've ever had, I want to thank you guys and the mayor for giving us the proclamation for Dare Day.
Thank you.[1332.75][1332.75][applause]
This is obviously a program we've had for many years. You know, I've seen firsthand how they interact with the DARE instructors, even years later. I've seen our past deputy chief who could talk to the kids, knew them, and they would share information. They were free to talk to the officer. So this is just one more program that provides that outreach to our community. And, you know, our goal is to keep improving and making more progress in expanding our outreach to the community. So thank you, City Council, for allowing us to have this program. It's done a lot of good in our community, and we want to continue it. So thank you. And thank you to Officer Outlaw.
I'll open up for any comments from City Council.
Well, I think you have to get kids when they're young if you want to make an impact, and this is one of the areas that I think is really, really critical to make an impact at a young age, because there is so much pressure out there to kids. I mean, even when my son was that age and he went through the program, it was a different world than it is today. And, you know, with cyber crimes and all these other things going on. So I really applaud you for your work, Heidi. Thank you so very much, and thank you, Ed. Well, I certainly have so much to tell you. You know how I feel about you. So as Ed knows, my daughter was one of the girls that took the DARE program, and all the kids at the school, they love you. I mean, when you come to our committee outreach that we do every year, you are gifted. Like, you have done so much for the committee, for my word, for the kids. The parents love you. Everybody loves you. I've seen you, how you interact with them, and it just, you are gifted. I mean, Ed, we've talked about this before, you chose the right person for the job. It's, I can't thank you enough for everything that you do, the patience that you have. I haven't seen, as a police officer, you have a lot of time. You let the kids touch the car, go inside, do everything. I mean, I just like, love to watch you doing this. And I want to thank you personally for helping me with those committee outreach. Thank you again, from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Thanks, Heidi, to you and all the officers before you, and the officers all over the world that do this. If you save one person, that is a good job. And that's all you look to, save one. Congratulations. And I hope you save two.
I want to thank you, Heidi, for all you do for the community, the schools, the children, for everything, the time that you put into it, your dedication to it, and thanks, Ed, for continuing the program. And I know that, you know, hopefully you'll be around a while. You ain't retiring anytime soon like the others. Thanks again.
Mayor, if I could, I can remember, you know, being in DARE myself in grade school over at Holy Family. It was a Joliet officer that was there. But I think one thing that's important to note of the program, too, is that kids at a young age look at authority differently. And when an officer can come in there and relate to the kids like their teachers do, or like other adults do, they realize that they're real people. And then when they see you on the street, they can, you know, treat you with respect. That's one of the big takeaways of the program that's not, you know, mentioned as much. But we've certainly had a great group of men and women leading this program, and I appreciate all you do, just like everybody else has said, Heidi, for the program and the Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Heidi.
Having three kids that all went through the DARE program, and you were instrumental in making them aware of all the risks that are out there, and they all, three of them just spoke really highly of you, and just wanted to let you know how much that's appreciated. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Heidi, and thanks for all you do for the young children of our community. Okay, that is it for the agenda items for the mayor. I'd just like to remind all of our residents that yard waste pickup started actually today, so your yard waste can be put out on your regular collection day from now until the end of November. And the only other thing is with Easter right around the corner here, I certainly want to wish all of our residents a blessed and happy Easter to you and to your families this Easter season. With that, I will entertain any questions that anybody may have.
No, just a quick comment, Mayor. If we can have the next work session or so, just a clarification about what the meaning of a committee is, I would appreciate it. Just a refresher to all of us.
Okay, all right.
Just a little bit more details of what we do, what we're not supposed to do. I would appreciate that.
I didn't get that, Claudia. What'd you say? Sorry. Update on what? Committee?
Yeah, just an update about what the duties of a committee.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, a committee in general.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to our city clerk. Our city clerk, Christine Richey-Haw. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening. Thank you. I just want to announce our citywide garage sale will be held Thursday, May 19th through Sunday, May 22nd. The fee for the garage sale permit is $5 and can be picked up in the clerk's office Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. The deadline to submit your application for your address to be on the list is May 17th. And if you have any questions, please give us a call at 815-741-5100. And that's all I have to report tonight.
Any questions of city clerk? All right, thanks, Chris. Our treasurer, Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to report regular overtime payroll from 31422 through 32722 in the amount of $238,278.83. I seek a motion for approval for a list of bills, which during that same timeframe totaled $517,830.20.
So moved is presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Richey?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
And Mark Zepidi?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I thank you all. Take any questions if you have them.
Questions of city treasurer? Okay, thanks, Glenn.
Thanks, good night.
Unfinished business. We have nothing on the agenda. Anyone? New business? Anybody? Committee liaison reports, anyone? City council comments? Positive city council comments? Anything you'd like to share with any of your constituents? Anybody? First, we'll begin with Ward Three, Alderperson Oberlin.
The Czech Republic-
City council comments? Positive city council comments? Anything you'd like to share with any of your constituents? Anybody? First, we'll begin with Ward Three, Alderperson Oberlin.
The Czech Republic wanted me to let everyone know that this year it's going to be the 80th anniversary of the Ladisce Memorial Program. It's going to be held on Sunday, June 12th at 11:00 a.m. at the Ladisce Memorial Park. It's going to be quite, quite, quite an event this year because it's 80 years, and it's very hard to believe it's been 80 years since that atrocity, but it has been.
Alderman Zepidi.
11:00 a.m.
I'd like to acknowledge the Richland Boys Bowling Team and as well as two individual girl bowlers that all qualified for the state finals. I believe they'll be bowling in the state finals this Friday, so I want to congratulate all of them and wish them luck. And I also want to congratulate Mr. Hopkins and all the bowlers on a terrific season. Thank you.
Ward Four, Alderman Albert.
Yeah, Mayor, one last plug for the Crest Hill Lions Club Easter egg hunt at Richland School on Saturday, April 16th. Starts promptly at noon. Ages zero through 10 are invited this year. So that'll be Saturday, April 16th at Richland School on the west side of the building in the COMED easement area. Thank you.
Alderman Kuhval.
Nothing to add at this time, Mayor.
Ward One, Alderman Dyke.
I just want to wish everyone a happy and blessed Easter.
Alderman Richet.
Nothing at this time.
Ward Two, Alderman Jefferson.
Nothing at this time.
Alderwoman Gazzal.
I just want to announce that the Richland Music Booster fundraiser for, I'm one of the board members, and we're asking the resident and anyone in the council here would like to buy Papa Nicholas coffee for part of the fundraising for us. We appreciate it. If you can go on the Richland website, and you can order, you have till Friday to order some coffee. It's delicious. And also they offer tea. And also want to wish all the residents, city councils, all the staff and departments a very blessed Easter. Remember, what is the reason for Easter? Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, public comment. Anyone like to?
Can I ask one question? Is that coffee, is it, is it, do they have the pods and stuff too, or just beans, or how is it? Yeah. Do they have the pods? Mm-hmm. Oh, sweet. Okay, thank you.
Public comment. Anyone like to address city council? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. To our city attorney, Mike Steph, is there a need for an executive session, Mike?
No.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
We have motion for an adjournment by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Jefferson. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Kuhval.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Richet.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Zepidi.
Yes.
And Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, meeting is adjourned at 7:33 p.m. I thank you and good evening.